We will now call the March 2nd, Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
All right, everybody, please rise for the pledge.
Rick, you want to start us?
I most certainly will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go ahead with the approval of minutes, Catherine, would you please read in a notice of video conferencing, please?
Certainly. The city of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capability was duly noticed per the City of Oak Creek municipal code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of the options for participation. This meeting may also be viewed at the city's YouTube page, this link for which was contained in all aforementioned notice methods. This meeting will be recorded and will also be accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. When unmuted, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with comments or questions. Comments and questions and comments may also be entered into the Q&amp;A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. There is one or more public hearings scheduled as part of this meeting. After the mayor announces the public hearing, staff will read the public hearing notice into the record, state that the hearing is open, and subject to the meeting procedure above, and provide a brief overview of the proposal. The chair will then proceed with the hearing by making calls for public comment. Following the third call for public comment, the chair will close the public hearing and proceed to consideration of the remaining agenda items.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Item three is the approval of minutes of February 15, 2021. If you'd please take a look. And when you are satisfied, there's no corrections, errors, omissions, we will look for a motion.
Kirkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of February 15, 2021.
Duke second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
I'm staying.
Kirkowski.
Aye. Same thing. Before we move on to recognition, I'd like to take a moment and introduce our new Assistant City Manager and/Finance City Finance Director, Max Gagan. Did I say your name correct, Max?
You did.
If you'd like, come on up and introduce yourself for everybody out there. We are streaming, just kind of say hello. Max comes from us, from the city of Janesville. We're very happy and very blessed to have gotten him. I think most people in the council have met him, but Max, just, you know, how are you feeling about being here?
Good. So, thank you, Mayor. So, my name's Max Gagan. I'm the new Assistant City Administrator and Controller. I've been here for three weeks, received a very warm welcome, so certainly to thank you as well as the staff. Just a little bit of my background, so I am coming from Janesville. I was their Finance Director for about three and a half years, as well as worked in their City Manager's Office for about five years prior to that, so.
You know, we're very excited to have you. We had quite a candidate pool, and again, I think we are very blessed to get you under employment. You know, I mean, the city administrators look forward to working with you, as well as most of the staff, so a little bit of a learning curve. I think you're going to enjoy Oak Creek. The council's been with us for a good long time.
Good.
Council, anything? Any welcomes for Max?
Max Alderman-Dukenyak, 3rd District. I have not met you as of yet, but Max, welcome to Oak Creek.
All right, thank you.
Same here, Max. Alderman Mike Toman, 4th District. I haven't had a chance to talk with you, but I'm looking forward to the interaction in the future.
Certainly, thank you.
Think you'll enjoy it, again, pretty open door policy. You need something, just ask.
Awesome.
See what we can do.
Great.
Great. Welcome aboard. That will get us to item four. This is a very proud moment again for Oak Creek, and it's Consideration of Proclamation to Ben Kozinski, our new state wrestling champion. At, I believe he was the heavyweight at 285. So Catherine, do you have a proclamation you'd like to read in?
Certainly. Council Proclamation Number 2101, congratulations to Benjamin Kozinski. All right, we're going to say it once, it's really nice, Kozinski, state wrestling champion. Whereas Ben won the 2021 state wrestling championship, and whereas Ben started wrestling in the 6th grade at Oak Creek East Middle School, and whereas Ben continued to wrestle through middle school and by 8th grade had moved to the 155 to 160 pound weight bracket, and whereas in 8th grade Ben took first place in the Forest Park Invitational, Slinger Red Rhino Tournament, Nicolot Junior Night Tournament, the Maguano Grizzly Open, and the Port Washington Piranha Youth Wrestling Tournament through Oak Creek Attucks, and whereas Ben took first place in the Parkland Southeast Conference and qualified for the Wisconsin's Wrestling Federation Folkstyle State Championships by taking 2nd place at the WWF Folkstyle Qualifier, and whereas sophomore year Ben took place in the Lancer Invitational and the Southeast Conference Tournament, the Regional Tournament, and the Sectional Tournament, Ben qualified for state and placed 6th for that year, and whereas Ben took 1st place the Fond de la Cardinal Invitational, the Sun Prairie Wrestling, and the Bob Downing Scramble, and would make his 100th win on February 15th of 2020. Junior year, Ben was the Southeast Conference Champion at 220 pounds and took 1st at both Regionals and Sectionals and placed 6th at state. In the offseason, Ben continued to attend AWA and wrestling tournaments as an Askeren wrestler. He took 1st place in the Freestyle State Championships and through AWA had many opportunities to wrestle and placed all over the U.S. Ben went to the New Way Summer Nationals Dual Meet in Atlantic City, Indiana Matt Hoosier Preseason Open, and took 2nd in the national tournament, wrestled at Super 32 in South Carolina, placed 5th in the USAW Brian Keck Preseason Open, and went 5-1 at the Christmas Party All-Star High School Duels. And whereas during his high school wrestling career, Ben started at 182 pound weight class. By senior year, Ben wrestled at the 285 pound weight class with a 15 and 0 record. And whereas Ben's senior year, he was ranked #1 in the state of Wisconsin, Ben took 1st place in the WIAA Regionals, Sectionals, and State tournaments. Ben's high school career includes 121 total wins, 32 losses, and of the 121 wins, 61 were pins. And whereas Ben also played football on the freshman team, JV and varsity football teams, participated in track, and joined the powerlifting group at the high school where Ben qualified for the state powerlifting tournament. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oak Creek that congratulations be and the same hereby extended to Benjamin Kozinski, Oak Creek State Wrestling Champion, 2021, 2020 and 2021 celebrating this accomplishment, dated the 2nd day of March 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Wow, that is very impressive, and what an impressive career. Would anybody like to say anything on Ben's behalf? Steve, you want to start us out?
Alderman Kirkowski, 1st District. Ben and his family live right around the corner, up the street from me, and we watched Ben grow up, and every Christmas season, you know, he was there on our doorstep selling the Reese from the Cub Scout, or Boy Scouts, and popcorn from the Cub Scouts, and amongst this impressive resume that Catherine read, he also found time to become an Eagle Scout, and he, his project was a covered play shelter at Grace Lutheran Early Childhood Center there on Pute. So he found time to do all that. Yeah, you heard that he was on football, and one of his accomplishments with powerlifting, he set an impressive personal record by doing a 500-pound deadlift in addition to his squats and his bench presses, so he's no small kid, and seen him running up and down Clement Avenue during the warm weather months, but one of the things that really impressed me about him a couple of weeks ago on Tuesday when we had that storm, you know, they had a snow day at school, and he and a half a dozen, so from his wrestling team, were out walking the neighborhood, shoveling snow for the neighbors at no cost, just going out there doing it, so that was, it was pretty good. And he's going to be taking his talents off to UW La Crosse to go wrestling there, so quite an impressive kid.
Very good.
Yep.
Very good. Someone else? Hi, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just echo Alderman Kirkowski's sentiments. I know Ben and his parents fairly well. Congratulations to him and his parents. His parents put a ton of support into this. They're traveling around with him all the time, constantly posting pictures of where he's going and traveling, and as Alderman Kirkowski said, he is also an Eagle Scout. His work ethic is amazing at such a young age, so I know the school is proud and the city should be proud too, so congratulations.
No, I did know Ben's father, and I did meet Ben when he was in scouting, and again, very impressive young man, and everything's been said, but Oak Creek couldn't be, couldn't be prouder. You know, occasionally, we do get these champions through, but at the time of COVID and everything that went on, this was an individual sport, he trained very hard, kind of watched the papers as he moved through because there were expectations on him, so there was some added pressure for him to wrap up his career, and again, Max, on behalf of the entire council and myself, congratulations, you made the city proud and you'll forever be a champion from the city of Oak Creek, so.
Mayor, one additional comment. I have this from a good source, I won't disclose it, but I learned that whenever Ben would pass the trophy case at the high school, he'd look at the plaque from the 1992, 29 years ago, the last champ from Oak Creek High School, Joe Perry, and he would say to himself and anybody else who would listen to him that one day he was going to be the state champ. So, came true.
Yeah, great to have goals and determinations, so. So if we could, would somebody please make a motion on four for that proclamation for Ben?
Kirkowski will make a motion to consider, adopt Council Proclamation Number 21-01, congratulations to Benjamin Kozinski, state wrestling champion.
Local second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. And item five is a first, is a public hearing, and it's a request by Dave Decker of Dave Decker Properties to amend an official map for a portion of the southeast quarter and southwest quarter and southwest corner of Section 18, when mapped unimproved right-of-way affecting some properties at 8100 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way. Catherine, if you would, please officially read that in correctly.
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a proposal by David Decker, Decker Properties, Inc., to amend the official map for a portion of the southeast quarter and the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 18, mapped unimproved right-of-way, affecting the properties at 8100 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way. Applicant is David Decker, Decker Properties, Inc. Therefore, the legal description, date of notice, January 27, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine, and with us tonight, we have our Assistant Planner, Carrie Papelbaum. Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Council. This is an official map amendment for the properties as mentioned, shown in red on the screen right now. We are eliminating the existing right-of-way, and then we are proposing a new right-of-way, which is currently on the screen. Rather than going into a lengthy history, just suffice to say that this had originally planned to go through to Drexel Avenue. Pre-party agreement with several parties had relocated that, eliminated the connection, and there's now regional stormwater. This proposal, which will be dedicated in an upcoming CSM, is more in conformance with the WISDOT 27th Street Access Management Plan, and a further connection to 27th Street will be private to serve the property. On the screen right now is a potential future layout. This is only to show how future connectivity could happen in the area with this future right-of-way that will be dedicated shortly. I'm happy to provide any further information or answer questions, but there is a suggestive motion for approval on the screen. Mr. Mayor?
We will make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, please address yourself and identify your name and address for the record. This will be the first call. Kevin, do we have anybody wishing to speak?
We do have the engineer and the owner, they have all those questions.
Thank you. Second call, anybody wishing to speak on the subject? I'm seeing no on the virtual, and we have nobody in person. Third and final call. Seeing no raised hands or anybody in the queue, we will now close the public hearing and move on to six, which is consideration of that official map amendment that we just discussed. Bring it up to council for discussion. Greg?
Alderman Lorick, 2nd District. This is in my district. I have not received any feedback from anybody, no questions or concerns. We did speak about this at planning, and as Carrie said, it was originally planned to go through to Drexel, and I believe that there was a land acquisition by the county, so Falk Park actually extended to just north of where this road would have ended, so that was kind of part of the reason to reroute it to where it is proposed right now, so ended past planning.
Yep, no, very good explanation. It was part of a land swap, actually, the three-part land swap with the property we sit on and stuff at Oakwood and Pute and what have you. There was also some wetlands in there that would have made traversing that, if you remember right, that would have came right about where we put in all those geo piers to get Drexel up, so this is a new recommendation from, is it DOT, Carrie, or is it our engineering department that came up with the map?
The map has proposed, are you speaking of the future right-of-way that we're showing here?
The future that would take us to 27th, yes.
Okay. This is taking the 27th Street Access Management Plan from DOT into consideration with the proposal for the future right-of-way on the Mr. Decker's properties. This was all done with everybody involved, engineering, planning, and Mr. Decker and his consultants as well. The 27th Street Access Management Plan obviously is from WISDOT, so that's kind of showing what's north of Mr. Decker's properties as a potential.
Okay, and thank you for that explanation and showing the future map of what could be. Appreciate it, so. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, motion?
Fork moves at the Council Adopt Ordinance 2998, an ordinance to amend the official map for a portion of the southeast quarter and the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 18.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item seven, another public hearing, and it's consideration by a request by David Nguyen of Blaine Supply, Inc. They're looking for a conditional use to allow for outdoor storage of retail merchandise, particularly trailers, in the property at 501 and 315 West Rossin that are known as Mills, Blaine's Farm and Fleet. So Catherine, if you would, please, would you read that?
Certainly. Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by David Nguyen, Blaine Supply, Inc., for a conditional use permit to allow for outdoor storage and display of retail merchandise, trailers, on the properties at 501 and 315 West Rossin Avenue, Lot 1 of CSM to be recorded. Applicant is David Nguyen, Blaine Supply, Inc. Property owner is Farm and Fleet of Janesville and Residential Real Estate, LLC. Legal description, therefore, date of notice, January 27, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
And with us is, once again, Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The conditional use permit for these two properties on the CSM that will be combining them is for the outdoor storage and display of a few trailers. The applicant has had several temporary use permits in the past, and this was recommended by staff for them to find a permanent solution. And on the screen right now is showing the location of where those proposed trailers would be stored and displayed on the eastern portion of that lot that will be acquired and combined. The screening that's shown on the screen right now, the landscaping, may be enhanced slightly, there may be a fence that's added, but we are working with the applicant on ensuring that the landscaping is sufficient and provides screening to that remaining residential house to the east. All of the trailers will be parked in those marked striped stalls. There are conditions that have been recommended for the council's consideration and approval by the Plank Commission, who recommended that this be approved. Happy to answer any questions, but there is a motion for suggestion, a suggestive motion for approval for common council consideration. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Carrie. And as this is a public hearing, we will make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, please identify your name and address for the record. Kevin, anybody in the queue? That was the first call. Second call, anybody wishing to speak? Please use the raise hand function or identify yourself. Kevin's saying no. Third and final call. And we have nobody, so we will close the public hearing on seven and go to eight, which is consideration of the ordinance approving that conditional use permit for the above-mentioned properties of 501 and 315 West Rossin. Questions, comments? Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, 1st District. This seems to fit in with the stuff that Blaine sells, so it doesn't, it's all practically commercial all around them anyways, except for a few houses, so there's not a big deal really.
Anyone else? No. No, we did discuss it at planning, went through it, you know, I want to comment staff. This is something that came back year after year to staff. They looked for a more long-term solution along with Blaine, Blaine's Farm and Fleet, they were very amenable, and will be an improvement, and again, the conditional use permit, I think, was very well thought out for this particular tract of land to the east here, and if I'm not mistaken, the use is permitted only for the trailers, and it does sunset if they were to ever leave, correct, Carrie?
That is correct. The conditional use permit is actually valid for 10 years, and they could come back for an extension of that conditional use permit prior to that expiration date.
Thank you, and again, thank you to staff. It's another way to streamline and make life a little easier in Oak Creek for some of our good businesses, so. So, nothing further? Motion, please.
Kirkowski, make a motion to approve ordinance Number 2999, approving a conditional use permit allowing outdoor display of retail merchandise, trailers, and a portion of a parking lot on the properties at 501 and 315 West Rossin Avenue.
Local second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
And in new business, we are going to start with a short informational on our COVID-19 situation update, and with us is our Health Officer, Darcy DuWatt. Welcome, Darcy, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. Good evening. I'll be pretty brief tonight. We have good news, is we've continued to see a decrease in new cases here in Oak Creek. We've got just over 4,000 individuals who've tested positive, over 16,000 who've tested negative, and have, are still holding at 49 deaths among Oak Creek residents. Our current burden rate is 282 cases per 100,000, so that has come down significantly over the past couple of months, and our current percent positive is 5.4%, all really great news. We did update the Business Resources section of our website, so if you remember, almost a year ago, we had a discussion about phased reopening for businesses with phases A, B, C, and D, I believe, so we've transitioned away from those phases and now just have general recommendations for businesses to follow safe practices guidelines, so there's no longer any recommended capacity limits, it's just complying with, or recommended compliance with the things we've been talking about for a long time now, physical distancing and cleaning and things like that. So that website was, our website was updated earlier today. We continue to spend the majority of our time on vaccine clinics, so vaccine supply does remain limited, but we have started to see slow increases over the past couple of weeks. We're hopeful that with the approval of a third vaccine, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, that we will continue to see an increase in supply over the next couple of weeks. The state has said that they should receive the first shipment of that Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine next week. We are still holding vaccine clinics four to five days a week in collaboration with Cudahay and South Milwaukee, St. Francis Health Departments. We've given nearly 3,000 first doses of vaccine at our clinics, and we are also providing the second doses when they are due. In the past three weeks, we've been operating out of the Assembly of God, which has been a really generous host, we've really enjoyed being there. Beginning next week, we will be opening our new clinic site on the former, in the former Kmart space in Cudahay, and then we expect to be there for the most, the majority of our clinics for the rest of our vaccination efforts. I did just want to share one graph with some vaccine data. Let's see, can you see my vaccine graph?
Yep.
Thanks. Thanks. So I have two different sets of numbers here. On the left, we have the percentages of our total population who's eligible for vaccines, so those 16 and older. Oak Creek is the green bar, so we've had 21% of our total population eligible in Oak Creek has received at least one dose of vaccine. Can see that's higher than in Milwaukee County, which is at 13%, and the state of Wisconsin overall, which is at 16%. And really good news on the right is our population 65 and older, so here in Oak Creek, we've seen 57% of our residents, 65 and older, who've had at least one dose of vaccine, which again is slightly higher than we see in the county and in Wisconsin, so we are happy to say that many of our residents have been able to access vaccine, whether it is through the Health Department clinics or through the many other vaccinators, healthcare systems, and pharmacies across the county. So we did see additional individuals become eligible for vaccine this week, teachers and childcare providers, some additional essential workers, and some additional healthcare personnel, so we will be working those individuals into our vaccine clinics. The state has announced that they are setting aside vaccine allocation for K through 12 educators as well as childcare providers, similar to how they did with the long-term care facilities. So beginning the week of March 15th, we will be receiving an additional shipment of vaccine that is specifically dedicated for educators and childcare providers, and we will be holding special clinics for those individuals to make sure that they all receive vaccine. So we are working closely with our schools and childcare centers to make sure they're aware of that and to plan for our clinic dates. We haven't yet heard from the state about the next eligible groups, though we do expect adults under the age of 65 with underlying health conditions to be included in that group. There is no timeline for that. I would guess, if I had to estimate, that probably sometime in April, hopefully before, depending on vaccine availability, they'll become eligible for vaccine. Any questions that I can answer tonight?
Questions for Darcy? Nothing?
I've got one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Darcy, just a quick question. My wife teaches in Oak Creek, and I was just curious, you mentioned that they're going to have the K through 12 opening up in March 15th. Do they have to sign up through the school district, or is the, or is the city of Oak Creek going to reach out to the teachers? Do you know how that's coordinated?
Yep, exactly. We'll be working with the administration, so once we have our clinic, our confirmation of when the vaccine will ship, we'll send a signup link through the, most likely through the district administration, and they'll disseminate that to their teachers and staff.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Hi, Darcy, Alderman Mike Toman. That graph you had up earlier, that was the first shot, right?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any numbers on, has anybody been receiving the second yet? I got an email today, I'm eligible next week, but has anybody gotten the second yet?
Yep, we've done quite a, quite a few second dose shots. It's hard, it's hard to pull the number out of the system right now for the number of people who finished their two-dose course, so I don't have that number yet, but I know the state is working on making that available, but we've been having weekly second dose clinics for about a month now, so quite a few people are fully vaccinated.
Thank you. Good work.
And?
Darcy, you have any feel for, have we had to turn away anyone north of, older than 65, or the number you see is those folks who wanted are getting it?
We, in the beginning, we certainly had more people who were trying to get appointments than we had every week based on our vaccine supply, but now we are seeing that most of the people who we are, we're aware of that are interested in vaccine are able to schedule appointments, so it seems like that, that resources are out there now.
Were you getting any feedback that some, some of those folks are waiting for the Were you getting any feedback that some, some of those folks are waiting for the Johnson &amp; Johnson version versus the?
You know, this week, we've started to get just a couple of questions about when we think we'll get that, and some people saying that they might want to hold, hold out for a one, one-dose vaccine, but it hasn't been too many people yet.
Are you surprised at the fact that the number's not higher?
You know, I think based on the limited vaccine supply, we've just, like I said, we've just started to see an increase really this, with this week's vaccine allocation. So, you know, I think compared to the many areas in the state, we certainly are seeing higher rates of vaccine here in Oak Creek, but we're really glad that we're going to be getting more vaccine and more people will be able to get in.
Is that it, Ken? Anyone else? Greg? Rich? Anything? Nothing? Okay. I am informed, I think we have a caller? Do we have a caller in? No? Nobody? Okay. Thank you, Darcy. Again, stay safe. Thank you for your work and we will move on to item 10, which is another informational. It's our summarized treasures report for the month ending January 31st, 2021. And we have Barb with us tonight. Hi, Barb.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. So as Mayor said, it's the Treasury Report on Investment and Banking for month ending January 31st, 2021. Our beginning balance was $73,329,020. Our ending balance is $72,865,795. Interest earned for the month was $25,906. There was a decrease from beginning to end balance of $463,225. The activity for the month, the larger activity, we had tax collection of $28,449,770. We did have tax settlements from our December collection that went out in January of $26,
Great. Questions for Barb? Steve?
Well, I'd better clarify this. I don't have a question regarding the Treasury Report, but I do have a question of Barb from the monthly departmental report under the assessors. Am I allowed to ask that question or? I guess we look to Melissa for ruling. We go to the?
Yeah, we're, I don't know, if it ain't listed on the agenda, might be a better served on a one-on-one basis.
All right. I'll call you tomorrow, Barb.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that, Steve.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? No. So, you know, Barb, it, it looks kind of, year to year, there wasn't a, a large increase, little bit of holdup in tax payments, you know, based with the COVID and things like that, a little more usage of the banks, things like that to make payments, but otherwise the city was pretty steady, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was. When I reported the last time, we had been down a little bit, I think around a little over 5% for December collection. And I thought perhaps it had something to do with like a delay in mail, more people just paying in January versus December, which it seems like that's what happened because January collection was up about 5%. So it really kind of leveled off, leveled off between December and January.
Yeah, thank you. Nothing further. Chris, do you have anything?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing further, Barb. Thank you. Enjoy the evening. Thank you for coming on. It'll get us to item 11, and that's consideration of an ordinance to repeal and recreate sections 11.86 and 11.87 of the municipal code regarding offenses by juveniles. Who is helping us? Mr. Stecker, Officer Stecker, how are you?
I'm doing great tonight. I don't know if Melissa's there, if she has anything to start off, otherwise I can.
I don't know. It looks like she's signaling you're going to start.
All right. We also have our, one of our school resources officers, Hank Narai, he's here to assist. He's been working on this for a while. One of the things that came up was several years ago with the influx of minors having access to phones and electronics and the increase in sexting came up. This ordinance was something that was researched to enable the school resource officers to be able to enforce some of those items that come up. This does not take away from that interchange between an adult and a minor. That's a crime that's completely separate. This is dealing with the student-to-student behavior, and part of that is changing the juvenile code that we had in there, moving them around, but the biggest one is the inclusion or the hopeful inclusion of 11.86, which is sexy and prohibited. So if there's specific questions, I can try to answer those for you. Otherwise, Officer Narai may be our better resource on that.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? Greg?
I just would like to comment thanking Melissa and the officers involved in drafting this and researching it. It's something that kind of hit close to home this year, and it was quite shocking to find out that there was actually nothing on the books to enforce some of the behavior that occurred at one of the schools. So thank you all involved for pushing this forward and presenting this.
Anyone else? No? Kevin, is there anybody wishing to speak? No? Okay. You know, I'll just add my two cents, too. I do want to thank city attorney, the PD, and Alderman Lorick, who really brought this to our attention, and this really moved very quickly. And much like technology, it needs to move that quickly. These are, these are new problems that are being brought about with these technologies that maybe our old code didn't, didn't recognize, and we're making the corrections as we can. We, you know, we'd like to be able to anticipate these things, but these unfortunate things are really out there and we need to do our best to be prepared and protect the public from it. So thank you, everybody involved in drafting this. I fully support it, so. Seeing Mar, oh, Melissa?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't want to, thank you. I don't want to prolong this, but I would say definitely kudos to the police department. This has actually been quite a long time coming and a discussion for many years. So to our school resource officers, certainly the captains, both of whom have been involved in this, and prior school resource officers. So it's been a discussion that's been ongoing and trying to make the fit into our code. There was some updating that needed to be done, but in terms of this being certainly a deterrent and something that in our schools can be used to try to educate students, educate families, I mean, with social media and the use of technology being so easy, I think that it's just something that candidly has been pushed for for a long time. So glad to bring it before you, but really the police department should be commended for their efforts in continuing to pursue this.
Great. Thank you for the explanation. I do appreciate the history.
As long as you're up there, Melissa.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike. Sure.
Is, these offenses that may occur, do they, do they constitute like a future list of these kids that are involved? That are, you know, because anything committed at the adult level, there is a list of, that can be carried through your record. Is that, is that the same procedure here or is that different?
So I don't want to presuppose maybe answering a different question. As far as if there is a citation issued, that's one thing in our municipal court, and that's essentially what this ordinance would give us the authority for. So in terms of a list, it would be a juvenile citation. That isn't something that is in the public domain, certainly. In terms of more serious offenses that Captain Stecker had alluded to, what, depending on those facts and whether or not there might be an adult involved, that would be a criminal offense, which may be subject to more significant penalties. Does that help?
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, Melissa's here yet? Okay.
Thank you.
Again, thank you to all, and if there's no further questions, motion, please.
Rock moves to adopt ordinance number 3000, an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 11.86 and 11.87 of the municipal code regarding offenses by juveniles.
Guzikowski, I'll second.
Rockall?
Alderman, Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of a resolution outlining the areas of responsibility for the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. Andrew, would you like to bring us up to speed on this?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I won't go too much into the history. I trust that as its recent history, we're aware that the council stood up the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. We had our initial meeting. That new board was a combination of Traffic and Safety Commission, the Water and Sewer Utility Commission, and the Capital Improvement Committee. So it is a very robust committee that handles a lot of business, a lot of policy, a lot of recommendations to the council. When we were going through that discussion, we did hint to, although we didn't talk in any specificity as a group, we did hint to the fact that this new committee, as it's comprised of more aldermanic representation, would have certain delegated areas of responsibility to it and that it would specifically govern in terms of, as you'll see later on, and we'll get into some more specifics, in terms of approving certain items and as, in terms of their cost implications. So we had a really good initial Board of Public Works meeting, I felt, last month, and, you know, we, as a staff, came up with some ideas on what authority this new board could have. And then the Board of Public Works also met again and opined on what they would be requesting of the council, and that's in your council packet tonight and is the text of the resolution. For the majority of major decisions that involve land or, or large budgets or significant capital improvements, personnel positions and things like that, that will either be retained by the common council or already vested in the Personnel and Finance Committee. So really, the change we seek is delegating certain spending thresholds for routine items, routine matters of the utility operations, utility apartment operations, but also budgeted and unbudgeted capital improvement expenditures. There's, for budgeted capital improvement expenditures, the request is being made that the council delegate in that Board of Public Works and Capital Assets a purchasing approval threshold, if you will, of 100,000 for budgeted capital improvement items and 50,000 for unbudgeted capital improvement items, so long as there is a source of funds identified, which mainly involves, we saved money on this capital item, we're cobbling together some things, but the staff has to bring forward a designated source of funds for those unbudgeted items. So if you think about it this way, we have a process in the city, we go through our budget, and the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets now would recommend, based on, you know, staff analysis and things during the budget process, would recommend to the council that it, you know, recommends to you that these capital items and these dollar amounts be approved by you, the full council. We go through our council budget workshops. We arrive at a budget, including a capital budget, that all, you know, six of you agree on, and with the mayor's input and largely his consent as well. And then we go and we implement those budgets during the year. So really, the question is, are, is the council comfortable vesting in the Board of Public Works the ability to implement largely those larger dollars being the capital improvement projects, items, up to 100,000 for budgeted items and up to 50,000 for unbudgeted items? So that's one question. The other question, there is another section in here for awarding, excuse me, awarding of contracts pertaining to the utility department project, operations and projects, that's up to $500,000. That was a number that was arrived at based on some analysis on average, average cost of contracts, average cost of projects that the utility manager had put together. And we kind of started at a million dollars and we found our way back to a compromise on 500,000. Keeping in mind, for almost 50 years, the utility commission operated and decided on things independent of the council entirely. So when we were going through some of those changes over the past several months, we knew we wanted to carve out some authority for this new board to operate not only the utility department, but also engineering, public works, et cetera. So that's really the crux of it. I know probably lends to maybe a few questions and not so many answers, but that was really the crux of the conversation we had with the Board of Public Works at their inaugural meeting, and that's what the request is this evening in the resolution before you.
Thank you, Andrew. Questions from council? Comments?
Just shed a little light from Alderman's perspective, and then we appreciate your work, Andrew, in terms of organizing that and providing a kind of a framework for kind of getting to some clarity over what should or should not be at the board level, which would be at the council level. And I think the kind of overriding factor is the fact that there's some greater comfort in the fact that there's three aldermen on this particular panel to begin with versus, you know, I was the only one at the water utility and, you know, that was, was just, was kind of independent, with feedback loop was kind of not there. So the fact that there's three aldermen here, I think makes a lot, a lot more difference in the fact that you can have some comfort level that the recommendations or authority given to the board actually have some basis in the governing body of the city as a whole. So I think that's kind of the overriding factor. And then the numbers are kind of first blush, what we thought was appropriate and like, I think came out of the meeting, it's evolutionary, if they need to change, we'll change them. And that's the way we were approaching it, so.
Just to add on to that, I apologize because that was the term that was used at the meeting, and I meant, I included it in the staff report and didn't bring it up in the remarks, but we really do view this as evolutionary. So we'll constantly hone this. Maybe the council in the end isn't comfortable with X, Y, or Z, and we can always revisit this. And certainly venues unrelated to, or projects or issues that come up unrelated to necessarily a dollar amount. When, when we were preparing the staff report, we, you know, we started thinking about, okay, well, this is a traffic and this was, you know, the Traffic and Safety Commission pieces are now a part of this board, and in the future, does the council need to hear about every stop sign that may need to be approved or a crosswalk that's reconfigured from a 35-degree angle to the road to a 45? No, but there's a clause in here that should be pointed out, and it's under general matters in the staff write-up, and that is, at any point in time, if the mayor, council president, or city administrator shall decide upon something being moved, you know, to the full common council, regardless of the authority we've asked. So maybe a good example, one of your positions as alderman, you know that this said thing could be a hot-button issue or something along those lines. You obviously use your governing body leadership to say, hey, council president or, hey, mayor, I think this warrants a full discussion of the council. Similarly, you know, in a city administrator role, you know, I talk to each of you and I can kind of feel out, oof, you know, we may have the need to have a dialogue among the six aldermen on this, and, you know, we're going to elevate that directly to the, you know, to the council. So we could get into a situation where the, it just doesn't quite feel right for something to be, you know, to end or be decided upon fully at the Board of Public Works, and we can certainly bring those items to you, but, you know, that's not imperfect. You know, that's not perfect. That's very imperfect and somewhat subjective. And I think that speaks to, you know, Ken's comments on, you know, this is a little bit of an evolution. We'll work through this, we'll get into a good cadence and trust level, I think, with this, you know, relationship between the board and the council.
Andy, there's one, two other things, actually. Andrew, I think it's a good idea in terms of the folks who are not on the Board of Public Works, the way we do the planning commission notifications after the fact, to make sure the rest of you guys that are not sitting there actually get a good heads up of what's going on and to get it quickly, you know, so that you get the posted, you know, the after-action kind of report, basically speaking, and here's, here's what we did and why. But I think the iteration of the fact that the board will have some, some authority on those, especially the budgeted CIP items where, you know, I always thought, and I think probably, why are we approving everything, pickup truck and lawnmower that needs to be purchased in the city? It's a waste of our time, generally speaking, especially if you can have our colleagues reviewing that exclusively with staff at, at the board level. I think that's, that's much more efficient and, you know, the whole thing has been the right size and streamlined this process as a government, and that's, I think that's a good step forward in that matter, so. And the other thing, I was reiterating to the guys there was the fact that, given its board, the board's body and makeup and the department board, the board's body and makeup and the departments involved, we're going to really demand of the staff who are involved in those departments, the professional levels, you know, the engineering, the DPW, the utility folks to be engaged in the overall process, not just siloed on their particular expertise. I think those folks have a lot of experience, we pay them a lot of money, we count on their judgment, and I think that's, we're trying to impress upon them, and we expect a lot of interaction and thought and feedback in the overall decision to make our jobs, you know, so we can make the best decisions we can. So I think that was impressed upon them, and we'll see how that works out.
Anyone else? Chris, Greg, anybody? No? No, you know, I think what you two guys said really makes sense. This is a good starting point. Again, it can become fluid as we see where these thresholds work and what they do, but the whole point of this, and Ken made a good point of it, was to really streamline it and get more expertise, better eyes on it and the whole thing. So I think this is a great step in the right direction. And again, as it evolves, we'll find out, is this the right threshold, is it the wrong one? And we'll see what's needed as we go through, and it'll be evolutionary, that one, so. If there's no further discussion, can we look for a motion?
It will move to approve Resolution 12230-03022, one a resolution outlining areas of responsibility for the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets.
Gail's Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 13, consideration of a resolution setting the date and time for the 2021 Board of Review. Catherine has this one to help us out.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual resolution setting our date and time and the timeline for the Board of Review process. For 2021, we will be meeting at our first statutory meeting on Monday, May 10th, here in council chambers at 5:00 PM. At that meeting, the board will determine the 2021 dates to hear any properly filed objections to assessment values, both residential and commercial. We're anticipating that that will be most likely the second week of June. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Catherine? Okay, seen none, motion? Welcome, move that the council adopt Resolution Number 12229-030221, a resolution setting the date and time for the 2021 Board of Review.
Gail's Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 14, consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of one Freight Line tandem axle dump truck with a 16-inch Christal dump body from Truck Country in the amount of And we got Darren with us, how are you, Darren?
Good, how you guys all doing?
Good, good. Looking for a truck, are you?
Yeah, it's been about 21 years.
Wow, wow, that's a long time for a work vehicle like that.
Yeah, we got our money's worth out of it.
So, take it this was just approved and with CPI, and it's within budget for you guys?
Yep, exactly. It's within the threshold, but it's over the $100,000, so just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention and see what you thought.
Okay, questions? Anybody? Questions, comments, nothing to my left, nothing right?
It's too easy for his appearance.
Yeah, you got off really well, but you got a nice background, I like your background. So, okay, seeing no questions for Darren, motion please.
It will move to approve the purchase of one Freightliner tandem axle dump truck with a 16-foot Christal dump, Christal dump body from Truck Country in the amount of $125,933.
Gail's Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you very much.
Item 15, consideration of a resolution approving a minor land division for the general capital group for the properties at 9954 and 9962 South 13th Street. So we have Carrie with us again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, an apology for the errors that are in the report. This should be all referencing common council, and apparently I missed the fact that this does plan commission, so apologies there. This is just for a certified survey map, a minor land division combining these two properties. This will be absorbed into the overall Ryan Business Park PUD, but that's not for consideration tonight, that will be at a public hearing in the future. Post consolidation, the parcel will be just over 16 and 1/2 acres. There is something in the report that mentions conditions of approval. Staff have been working with the applicant regarding those conditions and are not recommending condition number one at this time. You should have a revised resolution that removes that first condition for your, for your consideration, so there should be just a condition to incorporate any technical corrections at this time. The certified survey map is shown on the screen right now, showing that consolidation. There's just a small square of a parcel that will be absorbed into Lot 1. Wetlands and floodplain and easements are shown on the CSM, and then subsequent pages will show the ownership and other details. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, there is a suggested motion for approval, again, with just the technical corrections. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions, comments regarding this, this minor land division? Greg?
Alderman Lorik, Second District. I just have a question on the, the eliminating the first condition. I know that we, we added that condition at planning or left it, and I should say, what's the story behind removing it now?
We had internal discussions and determined that if the county were to require dedication of right-of-way, it would be the county to coordinate with the applicant at that time. Since we have not heard back yet from the reviewing agency, which would be the county, we expect that to happen later this week. Staff felt that pursuing that condition at this time was not, was not recommended, so we're suggesting that that can be handled at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I would have saved some discussion the other night. Any other questions? Kevin, we have a person wishing to speak.
Mr. Faber should be able to speak, leave your name and address for the record. Mayor, council members, my name is Michael Faber, Ryan Business Parks LLC, N17W24222, Riverwood Drive, Oma Coshaw, Wisconsin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This small parcel is, with encouragement from city leadership in the past, one of two parcels along 13th Street that we've been attempting to acquire and absorb into Ryan Business Park. So far, we haven't been successful at the other one, but we were successful with this one, and I mostly wanted to be available to answer any questions, but also I had some comments to make, but given the staff recommendation change, I'll save you from listening to my comments unless there's further discussion on the dedication issue.
Great, thank you, Mr. Faber. No further discussion? No? Then I guess we can motion.
Thank you, Mayor. It will move to approve Resolution 12228-030221, approving a minor land division submitted by Linda Goran Levy, general capital group for the properties at 9954 and 9962 South 13th Street.
Gail's Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item 16 is engineering, and it's consideration of a motion to award the 2021 road improvement unit price to the lowest responsible bidder, paying on the estimated cost of $1,420,966.50. And we have Mike Simmons with us tonight to kind of give you the details. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. So following the, the council's adoption of Resolution 12190091520, back in September of last year, that was confirming the recommendation of the Capital Improvement Committee. They had a selection of roads, candidates for reconstruction in the 2021 cycle, and we had then followed that up with our in-staff design and advertising for public bids, and the bids were opened Friday, the, two Fridays ago, excuse me, and very competitive bids. We're always happy to see that, just 0.61% separated the two bidders. Two bidders, we'd always like to get another bidder if we can, but these large paving projects, two is about generally what we will see. So Pen Dolan was the low bidder, and the recommendation is to award the work to them. Just a couple, a couple of notes, we do have a couple of road segments, County Line Road, 10th Avenue, and Groveland Drive, these are those surface treatments that we have by design incorporated into the, the road rehab projects. They're a less costly alternative, they do have their place as far as what they can do depending on the type of failure that the roads have, and that we can get more road rehabilitated for a cheaper price, basically a third of the prices if we were going to mill and overlay some of these roadways, so. Those are in there. Another road that was included with this bid package was West Pute's Road from 13th Street to 27th Street, very bad road, and kind of was going downhill fast, so able to get that approved by the council, and that has a separate funding source, it's not the money that was budgeted. As with the others, this would be through TID 7, as that falls within that, within those boundaries. So if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Questions for Mike?
Mike Alderman Dukenyak, Third District, I mean, I understand that this report is just asking for the approval of the bidder, but once we get into the projects, will, will there be a report providing additional detail as to, you know, the, the timing of the projects? The, the one that has, at least for, for me personally and for members of my district, is, is that Pute's Road repair, so is that, I'm guessing that's not going to be a complete closure, that's one lane at a time, but will there be more details forthcoming about that project and many of the others?
There, there will be, yes. That one is a, more of a reconstruction than, than just a rehabilitation, so, in fact, there are plans for, to close that road down for as short as period as possible, but we do have a detour route already selected and a plan for the signage and the detouring, and of course, notifications to affect the property owners.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, seen none, motion please.
It will move to approve the 2021 road improvements unit price contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Pen Dolan Inc., at the estimated cost of $1,420,966.50.
Gail's Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item 17 is consideration of an ordinance repealing and recreating Section 10.20, Sub C, Sub 1 of the City of Oak Creek's Municipal Code Designating Heavy Traffic Routes. Mike?
And as we've had quite a bit of development over the past several years, we have installed new roads, we have converted existing roads into roads that are needed to pass heavy truck traffic, and as we took another look at the, at the ordinance as it was, we had gotten behind in, in, in keeping that updated, and so what you have here before you are the list of roads that needed to be, that need to be added to that list of designated heavy truck routes. And, you know, just, you know, front center, top one, apart, El Court is the newest road, and that is the new, City Public Road into Ryan Business Park, but then you see Corporate Preserve Drive and Reinhardt Drive, of course, IKEA Way, and then Oakview Parkway, which is the, the main road that, that traverses through Oakview Business Park. As we cleaned up that list, we also saw that Edison Road was still on there, which is a road that was vacated by the city quite a long time ago. It, it is really now just a private driveway into Mid-America Steel Drum. And then Ryan Road from Fifth Avenue to Chicago Road, of course, that is discontinuous now as, as Fifth Avenue was rerouted from the intersection of Highway 100 and Chicago Road. So really, just cleaning up that list and getting that all officially taken care of.
Questions for Mike? Comments? Nope. Okay, seen none, motion?
Welcome, move to approve ordinance 3001, an ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 10.20, Sub C, Sub 1 of the City of Oak Creek Municipal Code Designating Heavy Traffic Routes.
Gail's Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 18 is consideration of a resolution in support of the addition of city sidewalks on Milwaukee County's proposed Rossen Avenue reconstruction project. Mike?
So we have been working with Milwaukee County as they've been proceeding on with their plans for this planned reconstruction project. This is Rossen Avenue, which is County Trunk Highway BB, from a couple hundred feet east of 27th Street to just past the intersection with 20th Street. Complete reconstruction by the county, and they will be adding sidewalks along the north side of, of the roadway, and as is their policy, the sidewalks go in, but they will not be responsible for the ownership and maintenance of the sidewalks, and as such, they, they ask that a resolution be passed by the city supporting the addition of sidewalks and affirming that the city will indeed be the owners of the sidewalk and, and make sure that the maintenance is taken care of. When I say the maintenance, that is not our crews out there clearing those sidewalks of, of snow and ice, it is, that is that we will enforce our ordinance that requires the adjacent property owners to do so. But then also, if that sidewalk needs to be reconstructed sometime in the future, or, you know, more likely, there are some trip hazards, some, some dangerous cracks or other imperfections, you know, we would, we would take care of those as we do our, our maintenance projects on, on our public sidewalks. And then, and then just to, just to let you know, there will be a, a county municipal agreement coming down the road, which will define some financial responsibilities for the city and the project, but, but those are not expected to be large by any means. It, it's going to be work that the city would be requesting to happen to their utilities, i.e. manhole adjustments, hydrants, relocations, and streetlights to be relocated, but that's not part of what we're doing here tonight, but there, there will be another agreement coming. Sidewalks will be totally paid for by Milwaukee County.
Thank you, Mike. Questions, Steve?
Mike Alderman Kirkowski, First District, I understand, I realize we're talking about 2022 here, but perhaps it's not too soon to start thinking about implications of the fact that the county's going to do this reconstruction on Rossen from 27th to 20th, and then the state's planning to do Drexel from 13th to Howell, which is probably all going to happen at the same time, so we might need to think about how we're going to communicate these issues to the traveling public, because when all these things happen, we get complaints, and... going to happen at the same time, so we might need to think about how we're going to communicate these issues to the traveling public, because when all these things happen, we get complaints, and, you know, you got different jurisdictions, there are different constructions, and all at the same time, and folks don't understand that, but, you know, it happens when the money's there, basically, so if you go, Mike, start that process, you know, soon maybe, keep that in mind.
Yep, very good point, yes, will do.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none, motion please.
We'll move to approve Resolution Number 12231-030221, in support of the addition of city sidewalk on Milwaukee County's proposed Rossin Avenue reconstruction project.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item 19 is the license committee, I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I know I sound like a broken record when I say this, but has everybody had an opportunity to review the common council report for tonight? Any curious questions or concerns for the one item? Seeing none, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the March 2nd, 2021 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item 20 is our vendor summary report, for the date ending February 24th, 2021. Everybody, please take a look, and if there's any questions, feel free to speak up, and the appropriate person shall answer. Mayor, who's answering the questions? I guess it depends on the department and what it is. Oh, it would be number five. Number five. Which garage doors, I mean, police fire or city hall? Um...
Fire station, but I...
I know they were having problems at one. Gil? I, yeah, you know, don't hold me to that, but...
I think it was two.
Just curious, I mean...
I think it was two. Yeah, it was two.
It's two, Max?
Yeah.
Station two, apparently. Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. Just currently our oldest station in the pack. Kind of need a whole new building. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Dukenyak, Third District, number 13, this is directed to Melissa. Melissa, it's been quite some time, probably, I don't know, four, six months, that we've discussed the cost recovery on lakefront development. Any updates, any news?
Sure. I can tell you that a couple of weeks ago, Attorney Haskins and myself had an in-depth conversation with our council at Murphy &amp; Proctouse regarding this matter. Discovery continues, but in addition to that, we have a status conference in court on May 27th. The bottom line is that we are proceeding with determination of whether or not there can be any coverage available, and that's part of the extended discovery process of sharing information and requesting information from the various parties. To that end, I can go into a little bit more detail offline with you, Alderman Dukenyak, if needed, but it was a very positive call, and we're moving forward. Nothing ever goes as fast as we want it to, I know that, so, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions with our vendor summary? Okay, seeing none, motion please.
We'll move to approve the February 24, 2021, Vendor Summary Report, in the total amount of $359,032.44. Of this total, $10,233.43 will impact the 2020 fiscal year. The remaining amount, $348,798.1, will impact the 2021 fiscal year.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And that will bring us to adjournment, so, motion to adjourn, please. Kirkowski will make a motion to adjourn.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item three is consideration to take a motion on action from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move to approve a annual increase in the city administrator's base salary of 3% retroactive to January 1st, 2021, and a $3,000 non-base building bonus payable on the next applicable date.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And that will bring us to adjournment, so, motion to adjourn, please. Kirkowski will make a motion to adjourn.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Okay, good night, everybody, thank you for streaming in, appreciate it.